Good evening. I'd like to call to order the notice and call for a special joint meeting of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and the City Council and of the City of Victorville. First item on the agenda is public comment. I have one card for Agenda Item Number One. I have several cards for Agenda Item Number Three, but the only card I have for Agenda Item Number One is Dorothy Miller. Dorothy? I'd also like to remind everyone here, as Dorothy's coming up, that there's quite an extensive explanation of what public comment or any comment directed to the council on any Agenda Item should include. But I caution each and every one of you, please do not make derogatory comments or insults against any single council member up here. You know, I don't think it's appropriate that people make those comments to any member of the council, and I'd appreciate if you'd have the respect for us and not do that. Address your comments to the entire council. Thank you.
Hello, council members, and Mr. McCracken, Mayor. I have a few little problems. I mean, we're still harassing these poor employees. I mean, this is absolutely horrible. They're still worried about losing their jobs, and I think that is ridiculous. You want to get more police. We don't need more police. Captain Reynolds told you how many times we do not need them, but you want to spend the money for them and not pay attention to the people and what they need? I mean, you know what's going on. You know these roads are absolutely ridiculous. You know everything's gone down the tubes because you don't have the money to take care of things. And it's just absolutely out of control, and you just keep on and on and on. And there is some people sitting up there that thinks all we need to do is take care of the red light cameras, and we've got to take care of more police. Now, that's not right. Now, I think you'd better sit down and start thinking what is more important to this city, to get our money built back up so we have a city. Right now, we have Old Old Town, and this is Old Town, and we need to straighten it out. And if you guys can't take care of it, then hey, it's down the tubes. And you asked about, are we still going to have a city in June? I don't know. The way the money is going, I have no idea. I just hope and pray that things get worked out, and we can live like human beings again, and these employees don't have to worry about their job, that we have enough money to take care of them. Thank you.
All right. I have no other cards for Agenda Item Number One. Is anyone else wishing to speak to us on Agenda Item Number One? I think no one will move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a companion item to City Council Item Number Four. This is a request to, one, rescind this December 14th, 2010 action approving a lease agreement for the same facility with Federal Express Corporation; and, two, approve a mutual settlement agreement and release among Leading Edge Aviation Services, the City of Victorville, and Southern California Logistics Airport Authority; and, three, approve the standard form lease agreement with Leading Edge Aviation Services for Hangar 746. Mr. Messler?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item is also a companion item to the city, where the city is being asked to approve the settlement agreement. I am pleased to announce to you tonight that yesterday we finalized our settlement with Leading Edge for the lawsuit that they had filed against both the Airport Authority and the City of Victorville. Different from the staff report that was provided for you as part of this agenda, we have made some minor changes to that document which have actually circulated for you. Those changes were made largely over the weekend and through Monday morning to get this deal wrapped up. But effectively, this settlement started really over the Christmas holiday, and we've been working on this transaction intently and involved causing Federal Express, actually, to vacate the hangar that was the subject of the dispute, get them moved out of the hangar, and effectively availing 746 to Leading Edge. With that, Leading Edge actually took occupancy last night after execution of all the documents. So the action before you tonight is effectively seeking your ratification of the settlement agreement along with the lease agreement. Very basically, the settlement agreement differs from the one that you have as we acknowledge as a part of the negotiation, a waiver of disputed amounts owing by Leading Edge associated with Hangar Number 747 that was believed by the Airport Authority and claimed by the Airport Authority as a function of the negotiation that dating back to 2007, the Airport Authority was owed an order of $111,000 in back rent. That became a function of the settlement, and that was actually written into the settlement agreement, and that's the only material difference in what was signed yesterday versus what is, what was actually published in the agenda. That's actually in Section 3B. The lease agreement, the only thing different that happened in the last minute that made the deal work involved providing an early termination provision for Leading Edge associated with Hangar 746, and effectively it enabled Leading Edge to terminate within 90 days, actually 120 days is the notice that we've required from them where they're allowed to terminate early. Otherwise, the initial term along with the option terms are consistent with those provisions that we shared with the board in closed session, which enables this agreement to have an initial term of five years with three renewable five-year options. I should point out in the fiscal impact so that it's not misleading that the $191,000 lease revenue amount was actually identified as a value for the lease at the time that this was expected to be heard. That lease value for the remaining part of the fiscal year is actually $182,160. One thing that we did do in this lease is we actually achieved a much higher monthly lease rate than what FedEx was paying previously. So effectively, it doesn't cause a material reduction in our budgeted revenues for this hangar facility. So with that, staff is recommending your ratification of settlement agreement, the lease agreement, and that is after you rescind the action of December 14th, 2010 involving this board's approval of the FedEx lease for the same hangar. Thank you.
Mr. Messler, could you give us an idea of the number of jobs that would be created as a result of this agreement?
Well, we've heard a lot of numbers. We've heard as many as 200 new jobs just by availing this hangar to Leading Edge. And availing this hangar to Leading Edge will enable them to occupy three hangars. Hangar Number 756, which is a narrow-body hangar that can actually accommodate two narrow-body aircraft at the same time. Hangar Number 747 is a wide-body hangar which they've occupied since 2007. This is the third hangar that will actually allow them to produce paint jobs on four aircraft simultaneously. This hangar alone is expected to generate as many as 200 jobs, though we didn't get a binding obligation from the tenant in that regard just because of the cyclical nature of their business. Certainly appropriate to believe that they'll achieve those numbers given our knowledge of what they have in the pipeline with respect to work and work order. Their principal job and the principal reason for this hangar was to help them satisfy the United Airlines contract. As many of you know, United Airlines merged with Continental. And when you take those two fleets of aircraft, both fleets have to be converted into one common agreed-upon paint scheme. So effectively, all of the United Airlines fleet are being, and the Continental fleet are being repainted. A very large percentage of those is coming through our facility. Also, you probably read very recently that the inventory of 787 Dreamliner aircraft that's sitting in airports literally parked until it can get approved by the FAA for flight worthiness. Leading Edge just signed a contract with Boeing also to help paint, convert those 787 aircrafts into the paint schemes of whoever the intended buyers of those aircraft are. That combined with the fact that the rush to get this thing settled yesterday largely was triggered by a demand that they had by a new customer, Air Canada, where Air Canada is actually sending down a couple of aircraft to get painted as well. So certainly reasonable to expect a very high volume of jobs. I wouldn't be surprised if they reached the 200-employee job creation mark associated with this hangar.
Thank you.
Mr. Messler, were we able to locate FedEx at another site on the basis?
We're currently working with FedEx to try to identify an alternative location. Interesting with their operation is that their operation, as it was being conducted in Hangar 746, did not require 100 percent of the time of use for that hangar. In fact, over their three or so years of actually being the sublettee on that hangar, they'd only had two aircraft in, probably for a combined period of time of maybe five months of work. So it actually proved advantageous for us because it was able to be used for other purposes, sublet out to other tenants to satisfy other maintenance requirements. But we are working with them to try to accommodate another location.
There's no other questions or comments. These both items, Agenda Item Number Two under SCLAA, and Agenda Item Number Four under City Council, or before the council.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Is it a yes vote, or? Okay, I'll enter a yes vote for you. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a request for the City Council to rescind the vote taken at the March 1st, 2011 City Council meeting to approve the increase in the Sheriff's Department contract by filling the vacant Sheriff's Deputy positions. This was at the request of Councilman Rothschild, so I will look to you.
I would move that we vote to rescind that increase in the sheriff's contract and move it back to its original status before we took that vote. Any agreements or anything working with the city manager and the Sheriff's Department prior to that vote certainly is permissible, but the additional law enforcement officers at this time, I would, motion requires affirmative motion. My motion is to rescind the motion taken on March 1st, and that would require affirmative action from this council because that's my motion, so I would make that motion at this time. The arguments that were stated are still the same. We've got an excess of $8 million in an ongoing revenue shortfall. That's a structural deficit to the budget. We need to correct that first. The state of California and federal government refuse to handle their budgets in that fashion. Local governments like us, we must handle ours in that fashion, and that means taking those difficult challenges. So at this time, that would be my motion.
All right. Understanding we have a motion and a second, I do have several cards, so I'd like to allow these folks to speak before the council. The first card that I have is Scott Webb.
Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Could you put that up in your?
Sorry, brother. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Scott Webb. I'm an associate planner with the Development Department, which comprises planning and building and code enforcement. A large number of us in the audience today are concerned about our future and concerned about the city's future. I know a lot of budgetary decisions face you today and will be, you know, until we get out of this recession. And I can't really speak to the other departments, but I'd like to bring up some issues that concern our department. Since the layoffs started, the Development Department has been cut in half from 50 employees to 25, and we've reduced our budget by 2/3. Remaining employees have had their pays reduced, benefits reduced, and salaries frozen. Employees have taken on additional responsibilities, often doing the job of several previous employees. We have done all this without complaint. We knew as development slowed that cuts were expected, but we don't have anything else to cut without cutting vital services and state mandates to our community. We are a revenue generating department. A large part of our funds generate other departments, help fund other departments such as police and fire. Last week, it was pointed out in the staff report that development has dropped to 1995 levels, when our population was only 60,000. During that year, we only had 25 employees. Today, in 2011, we still only have 25 employees. Further cuts will eliminate services provided to our residential and commercial communities, leading to the physical decay of our community, and resulting in the need for more public safety. We ask that you thoroughly examine all of your alternatives before more cuts come to the city employees and the services that we provide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe Slagers?
My name is Joe Slagers. I'm also a member of the Development Department. I work in the Building Division as a, my official title is Plans Examiner, Plan Checker. I just have a few things that I would like to also express my concerns regarding. I understand that you as council members are faced with difficult decisions, and none of them have favorable outcomes. My only desire in approaching you is to express to you what I believe will be the result if we as a staff are asked to make additional cuts. Within my division of the Development Department, the Building Division, we have already been reduced from eight inspectors, three plans examiners, and three building technicians to one inspector, three plans examiners, and one building technician. We also still have our building official, which makes a staff of a total of six as compared to our original 15. These six provide all building inspection services, plan review services, and counter service. Overall, our department has been reduced, as Scott previously mentioned, from 50 to 25 with a 2/3 budget cut. I, as a plan reviewer, have been required to also become a building inspector, as you see how I dress today, as well as a counter technician as a result of the cuts that we have made, leaving us shorthanded, especially when other members of our staff are out of the office. All of our staff members have been required to accept similar additional duties. Along with that, we've been asked to assume such additional responsibilities as resuming, or, excuse me, reviewing and inspecting fire suppression equipment, reviewing and inspecting landscape maintenance assessment districts, all of these which were not responsibilities of ours in '95 with the budget and staffing that Scott had mentioned. These additional responsibilities also required us to obtain additional certifications such as fire plan review and inspection. And like I said before, we never did LMADS before, so we've been learning those things on the fly as well. All of these additional responsibilities came along with pay cuts and cuts to our benefits, and our department has powered through it, and I believe done an excellent job considering the cuts that we've taken. Although I do not work in other departments, I believe they could give you a similar story about additional work and less pay. We will continue to do our jobs to the best of our ability and without complaint, asking only that during these difficult times you allow us to keep the minimal staff that we are currently supplied with and seek other means of filling the budget gap. There is no fat left to cut, and any requirement to cut additional staff will come at a heavy cost to the services that we provide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Terry Monte Leone?
Hi, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the time to be able to address you guys here. Similar to Scott and Joe's conversation, I just wanted to reiterate how much the employees put into being here every day. I've been here with the city for 13 years. I totally love my job. I totally love working for the city, and I put in 120 percent when I'm here. And oftentimes, I'm here late, I'm here early, sometimes don't take breaks. Those are just, I mean, when I say sometimes don't make breaks, I mean, we work through them, we take the lunches like we're supposed to and all those type things. That's not what I mean as far as don't taking breaks, but just working and pressing through things and giving that extra, and it's more, it's discouraging to come across time in a place where something is being asked to be pulled in here for the services of police officers when it's been said that they aren't needed, and then to know that more additional staff is going to be cut, and our burden of getting the job done with less people is going to be more difficult. Right now, it's hard to keep up with everything that we have to do, but everybody is pushing along as best and as hard as they can. It's also discouraging to get disparaging remarks and attacks of incompetency when a lot of us really put in so much time, effort, energy, and love for this job and for the city. And we all, not only are concerned for ourselves and the services that we put in and the burden of the job that we have to do, but we're also concerned about how that's going to affect the city and the citizens of the city, because there's no way that we can keep cutting and not have services affected. It's going to trickle down somehow, and that's not fair to the employees and it's not fair to the citizens to keep putting this burden on here. I know that something needs to be done, but can't we find some alternatives?
Thank you. George Duran?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm also with Development Department. I'm the code enforcement manager. All city services, such as library, graffiti, and particularly code enforcement, are in jeopardy of being eliminated if asked to make further cuts. Like most departments, we are already minimally staffed due to budget constraints. For example, before the first layoffs, the city had eight code enforcement officers. Currently, there are five code enforcement officers working seven days a week and covering 74 square miles. Currently, our development staff have taken on additional duties and are physically boarding up vacant structures, cleaning up trash and weeds, draining abandoned pools for the safety of our residents, and all without employee complaints. Any further cuts will simply eliminate these so-called nonessential services, which will not only affect the quality of life in our city, but would also jeopardize the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Kay Schultz?
Well, I guess I'm the only resident here speaking against hiring the extra additional deputies, and I really thank Councilman Rothschild for rescinding his decision in favor of that. According to Chief Reynolds, these deputies aren't needed. According to statistics, crime is down in the City of Victorville, and according to the most recent audit, the city simply cannot afford to hire these additional employees. So I'm opposed to hiring these additional deputies, and I think it's heartbreaking to hear the employees talking about the fact that there's a possibility that other people are going to be hired while they themselves, you know, face jeopardy of losing their job. Another thing that I'm opposed to is the council granting substantial pay increases to three director positions. I read about that in the paper. It's wrong for city officials to cry poverty and to threaten employees with layoffs and then turn around and give a select few people additional pay increases. I believe it's probably true that they've had to take on additional duties, but so have many of the other employees here with the City of Victorville. And they've done it, as the gentlemen say, without complaint, even after they've had their salaries cut, their benefits cut. And I think by giving a select few people additional increases, it's just going to add, effectively negatively affect the morale of the employees, which I think is already kind of low. So I'd like you guys to take that into consideration if that ever should come to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Miller?
Mayor, council members, my name is Norman Miller, and, excuse me, it bothers me that after all that we've been told by Captain Reynolds about how good the Sheriff's Department is doing right now, and even your favorite newspaper has said that your crime rates have gone down in the City of Victorville, I think you really need to look at this, and I think you really need to vote the way it should be voted, not the way your egos might tell you to vote. Vote for the people, vote for the city, vote for the Sheriff's Department, vote to not include these extra deputies. How many employees could be saved if the deputies are not hired? Does anybody know that? Or do you ever even look at that? I just made a rough guess. Excuse me, I think it was like $1.3 million that was going to cost for the deputies, including their cars and everything else. If you took an average of $50,000 per year for an employee, which is, I don't know if it's in the middle, high, low, or wherever it's at, but even if it's that, that's an awful lot of employees that could be left here if we don't hire the extra deputies. Thank you.
Okay. On Agenda Item Number Three, that is the last card I have. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on Agenda Item Number Three? All right. Seeing no one.
I have one additional comment.
Sure, and I'll return it to the entire council for comments.
I'd learned one thing listening to some of you already that we don't think about a lot. You know, we're reducing our employees, 200-plus employees, and some of you have shifted job descriptions a bit, but some of the things that we don't think about is all the training that has to go back into restructuring some of that to make all of you as strong as we were before. So, the one gentleman that came up from planning there that was saying, "I'm doing something else too, and I wasn't trained to do that," but now you are doing that as that base employee body. So, again, those are the type of things, you can't just eliminate people, slide everybody down into tighter niches, and expect everybody to have that same compatibility. That extra training and stuff is part of the expense of doing that shifting downward as well. That's all I had on it.
I would just like to thank the employees, and just to remind you, you do have a right as, under the Constitution, to come and petition your government anytime you feel like you have to. But I would like to thank you for your service. I know you've been through some traumatic experience the last couple of years. We lost many of our fellow employees to the recession and to the need to trim down the budget. But I want you to know that I'm very proud of you. You have character, and you have moral ethic, and that's very important. And I want to just thank you again for your service and for standing by the city, even in the face of getting your wages reduced, your benefits reduced, and you're still out there working 120 percent and maybe even more. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for attending tonight and giving us your opinions and your thoughts. I am a little bit confused as to why the employees show up when we want to put cops on the street. Were these employees here when we were paying the city attorney $9 million? Were you here to say that you don't want the wastewater treatment plant when management told the city manager that it wasn't going to work out, that it would be a disaster? Were you here when they were paying Jim Worsham $2.1 million? Why now? What I think is, is that you come now because the city manager has told you that you're going to get laid off because we have cops. Well, the cops are a very small portion of the budget, and the city manager has been planning an additional layoff since last year with or without cops. So I just want you to know that, and I think you deserve the truth. I hope that I see you here at every council meeting, giving your opinion on how we're spending money, and ask the council, why is it that you're not willing to go out for an RFP, for a new city attorney, when other cities are spending less than $500,000 for attorney's fees to include personnel and litigation? And as far as the comments regarding incompetent staff, I think my comments were geared towards And as far as the comments regarding incompetent staff, I think my comments were geared towards management. Whoever managed the city and got us into this mess and how we became insolvent, that's the question. And it's not the staff, it's management. And what's the alternative if they're not incompetent? Is it a criminal act where we're at today, where we're going to be insolvent in three months, where we're on the brink of bankruptcy? So if I were management, I think I'd be rather to be called incompetent than criminal. So, there you have it. And I hope to see you at future meetings.
I will just make the same statement I made on this issue since I decided to run for this position last September after my first meeting with the chief. Anytime Chief Reynolds walks into this room and tells us he's losing the battle and he needs those positions filled to give us all assurance of community safety, I'll be the one, first one to stand up and approve that motion. But until I hear that, that's $1.3 million we don't need to spend in that area. We've got a tough enough road to hoe this next year. Believe me, this is not going to solve our budget problem, and it would be false to communicate that message to you. We've got more to do. It's going to be a very difficult year, but this is the right decision to make on this issue.
Well, this is definitely a tough decision, and I think we're going to have many more before us over the next several months. I know that we already have in planning a budget workshop coming up in April where this council will probably spend half a day discussing what we're going to do in the next fiscal year. That being said, having additional police officers on the streets or filling vacant positions is nothing more than a policy decision of the council. It is not something that ought to be taken lightly, and I don't believe any of us up here do take that lightly. When I ran for city council, I felt that we ought to have 50 additional deputies on the streets, and that's still today my feeling. I tremendously respect Captain Cliff Reynolds and Sheriff Rod Hoops, and believe if they tell us that they've got adequate resources to fight crime, that they do. But at the same time, that doesn't mean that I don't want to provide additional public safety for our citizens. And I would encourage you all to look at the city of Rancho Cucamonga. I mean, they must have 150 deputies, or more than that. I'm not sure exactly how many, but they have many more than we do, and we're relatively the same size. Obviously, they've got some additional resources down there with their sales tax dollars. But, again, they've made a policy decision that they ought to have more deputies on the streets. And from my perspective, I think we continue to need more deputies on the streets. Filling the eight vacant positions is only a drop in the bucket when you look at the deficit we're facing. Okay? I'm not in favor of laying off any of you. We've already laid off 200 people. I think we've done enough. It is time that this city, the city council, address other expense issues and try to figure out other ways to make cuts. And so that's what I will be pushing for. I think there's other things on the horizon, other things that are on the table, that I'll be pushing for. Sale of assets, potential financing opportunities for our wastewater treatment plant, or even the sale of that, that would allow us to get through the next fiscal year without laying off anyone. And I think it's so premature for us to say we're going to lay off people without having explored every single option that is available to this council. And so at least my marching orders to staff are that you better do that before you come with any recommendation to lay off, because it's going to be very difficult for me, after two years of having to do this, to lay off any additional employees. I think we can get to a point where we can keep everyone that we have on staff and fill these eight deputy positions. And I've heard from some of you, some of you have told me that very thing, that we can do both. So this council needs to explore and find ways to be able to do that. And I just, although I know where this vote is going tonight, and I don't think it's appropriate, I think that as we move forward, that we ought to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to cut whatever and wherever we need to, so that we don't cut services to our constituents and our citizens in the city, and we don't cut any of you. We have cut enough, we are bare bones as it is. I know all of you have taken on way more than you should have to, and I appreciate all your efforts over the last two years and the fact that you have not complained and you've gone about your day doing the job that you do and serving the citizens of this city. So I appreciate all of you being here. I would agree with Councilwoman Vias that you need to continue to be here. I sent you all a memo. You need to be a part of this process, because otherwise, this council might make decisions that are not in the best interest of the city. And we not only need to hear from our citizens, but we also need to hear from those that work for us. So, those are my comments. This is only the beginning of a process that we're going to deal with over the next several months.
I'd like to say one other thing. I was here when they laid off a great majority of the staff here that night, and to listen to the council one by one go down about how torn up they were about laying you off, and it was all due to their bad decision-making and their poor management of the city. And I'll tell you, I was absolutely shocked that not one single council person was willing to give up their salary, but they were willing to lay you off. So that spoke volumes to me. So I'm not for laying anyone off, especially when we're paying city attorneys and Orange County developers, and we're doing backroom deals, and all the things that are going on that can be stopped and that these councils don't want to stop, I'll never vote to lay anyone off.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember, or Mayor McEckern, we do have a request from Mr. Aaron Corn to read a statement into the record.
Yes, please.
To the Victorville City Council, I would like to take this opportunity to express my disappointment in Councilmember Rothschild's call for this special meeting. I feel Mr. Rothschild's decision to rescind his yes vote from the March 1, 2011 council meeting to fill the vacant sheriff's deputy positions is short-sighted and knee-jerk. I believe the prudent course of action would have been to review current spending along with the proposed budget to see what other non-essential items could be cut first. Remember, these are not new deputy positions. The vote taken on March 1 was to simply fill existing positions that were previously deemed necessary by the city council. As a fiscal conservative, I can certainly appreciate Councilman Rothschild's desire to balance the budget and close the deficit. However, I believe that cutting public safety is a huge mistake. A lot of hoopla has been made about the slightly lower crime rates this year. However, criminals are still far too comfortable in this city. We need to make the undesirables of this town feel unwelcome, and the best way to do that is to show force on the city's streets in the form of more police officers. We need to think of hiring cops as an investment. At last week's meeting during the budget review, the deputy city manager made the comment that revenue was something that was not under our control. I disagree. If you want to boost sales tax revenues, make this city an attractive place to shop and do business. A safe city attracts more affluent residents. Affluent residents spend more money. More spending in retail establishments means more tax money in the city's coffers. As far as finding the revenue and balancing the budget, I implore all of you to grab the consent calendar and a red pencil. By my cursory glance, it appears that we spent over $65,000 on consultants last month and nearly $50,000 on attorney fees, and that does not include the cost of Mr. DeBortnowski. $115,000 a month is a great start to trimming the fat and refocusing the money on things this city actually needs. And while I'm on the tangent of the city attorney, I cannot for the life of me understand why a rational council would not want to at least review the performance of such a high-dollar consultant. It seems if you really wanted to balance the budget, this is one area that deserves intense scrutiny. There's a motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. The motion carries with Mayor McEckern and Councilmember Vias voting no.
I just want to make one comment off the comments that the mayor made, and that is that there are a lot of difficult decisions coming down the line here. This workshop's important. Quite frankly, my failure, well, senior person on this council, I should have waited for those type of activities before I even joined in on that motion in the first place. If nothing else, it did get a lot of focus, a lot of focus on both sides of the question, down on the budget itself. And for that, it's a good thing, for the fact that I screwed up and had to have us go through a couple of weeks of redoing this and do a redo, and then go into the proper mode of workshops and everything and going into the budget process. That's what it's all about. You should never make those big decisions in between those segments unless it were an emergency. That wasn't clearly an emergency, that was just a failure on my part to do what I felt I should have done in the first place, was to wait for the proper timeline. I've always made the comment that police fire and streets are the three most important functions of any local government, and everything else builds up off of those three platforms. And that's the way my voting history has been for some 22 years in this council. So with that, we'll go into that process, and the vote certainly won't be unanimous, and some of them are difficult ones, but there will be five people making those decisions, not one, and you'll get the best of the five.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five. This is Request to adopt Resolution Number 11-013 entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Accepting Reimbursement of the Costs for Development of Public Infrastructure Improvements Within the City from the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority and Ratifying Execution and Delivery of a Reimbursement Agreement."
Motion by Mayor McEckern, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
Green last time. It's my turn, and it moves around.
Agenda Item Number Six is Request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $184,750 from the Storm Drain Utility Fund and ratify the contract with Appal Valley Construction in the same amount for the completion of emergency work needed at Eucalyptus Road and Oro Grande Wash. Do you have a card on this, Norm Miller?
Mayor, council members, Norm Miller, the Golden Triangle Ad Hoc Committee. And I just have a question on this kind of, this is an additional money from what they already spent to repair the Eucalyptus and Oro Grande Wash intersection, or whatever you want to call it. That work's been done before?
I'm sorry, Doug? Is this additional work, or does this cover the work that we completed as emergency work? Is this additional work? I understood it to be additional appropriation.
Yes.
Yeah, it is additional. We expended it, but it is still covered under the emergency work order, and we expect it to be reimbursed to FEMA.
And does this have anything to do with lowering the water line from 395 to, I guess, Oro Grande? No. Have anything to do with getting the Eucalyptus paved? No. Is it going to be paved? That's a different question. Maybe I should ask somebody else. This is just to put it back to the condition it was before the storm. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, return to the council for a decision.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Seven is Request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $125,000 from the Storm Drain Utility Fund and ratify the contract with Appal Valley Construction for the same amount for completion of emergency work needed at Osom and Turner washes.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Mayor Protem Cabrealis, may I get a vote from you? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number Eight is Request to approve or deny the requirement for 12427 Balsam Road to connect to the public sewer system.
Mayor, I'd like the record to reflect that Councilmember Vias has recused herself, and she's abstaining, and she's left the dais.
In council, the individual has made a request to the city council to receive a variance from this connection, and at the time it was discussed by the council, the motion to approve failed on a 2-2 vote. I didn't ask for an attorney's opinion. I always make the assumption that the motion failed is still standing, and, you know, I don't know if that means a motion to deny, or it just dies on its own. But I did recall that when we were trying to convince Appal Valley Hisberry Victorville to connect to the sewer, that there was a grace period. And that grace period allowed for people to not have to immediately connect to the sewer, which was a requirement of receiving the grant, but they could connect within a given period of time after sewers were made available. I didn't know if that was still in effect or not, and I then went back to VVWRA, the information is attached. I also went back to Sean McGlade, our engineer. We researched the record, and yes, there was a five-year grace period, and that is long, long gone. In regard to this fee here, we connect the fee on behalf of VVWRA. It is a fee that they set, and then we simply pass it through to them. We keep a very small portion of that, that's outlined in the request. And the amount that, if we do connect, if you granted, if you required the connection but waived the fee, we would have to pay the fee to the VVWRA. So, on the other hand, if you waive the fee for the individual, it then is a matter that it's a basis of economics. And there's been a ruling by the attorney in the past that economics in itself is not a basis for variance. It can be under certain circumstances, if it creates enough hardship. Staff cannot recommend that, because if it starts, where does it stop? We have encouraged Appal Valley Hisberry for years to connect to the public sewer system so that everyone's costs go down. And if you grant a variance because an individual says they can't afford it, would you not set a policy and grant a variance for all individuals who could not afford it? And if you do that, then you have to assume that all individuals currently on a septic tank would forever be on a septic tank, since it's cheaper to fix the septic tank than it is connect to the sewer. Staff understands the cost of this, we understand the difficulty with it, and it's a dilemma, and unfortunately, it's late in the council's lap, because we have to enforce the ordinance and make the individual come up with the money and pay the fee. Only the city council can grant the variance and say the individual does not have to connect to the sewer. All the information that we could find is attached as a part of this staff report and presented to the city council to help in your deliberation in making this decision.
Question for you. Have there been instances, or do you know? Do we have any history of granting variances on this issue? This can't be the first time someone's been required to connect to the sewer.
If there were, if there were, if there were conditions to connect to a sewer, and the street sewer line had to be extended so that the overall cost for the one individual to make the sewer connection wasn't only unreasonable, it was financially unreasonable but totally unreasonable that one person connecting would pay tens of thousands of dollars, and then all the neighbors could benefit as a result of that extension. In the period that I, Sean McGlade, or Doug can answer this, in the period I'm here that I was gone, I have no idea if variances have been granted, but I can tell you that when I retired, it was the policy of the council not to grant the variances. But I don't know what's happened in the last eight-year period. Maybe Mr. Cabrealis, who sits on the VVWRA, can answer that.
I can't remember exactly how many have been waived under the hardship condition, but the one or two that I remember was that the sewer was quite a ways from the property, and so they would have to run the main line to connect. out to the, to connect to the, uh, to the, um, the line. In this particular case, there's a lateral right in front of the house, so it's just a matter of connecting, uh, to the lateral from, uh, from the property. It's a difference, in my opinion, is a different situation.
Um, yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, um, council members. Again, you know, here, I'm here just to see what options, I'm not asking for, uh, actually, not asking to, to waive it, one of the options was to maybe even make payments back to the city as opposed to allow them some. Uh, the other one was to, uh, allow me just to do a new seepage pit versus connecting to, to the line, because there's a big difference. In one case, it's about $7,600. This is different times, I understand that when it was, when the requirement was put in place, it was better times, I mean, I could tell you five years ago, I was in a better position. Now, I mean, a lot of us out there are losing homes, and I hate to do that, you know, I don't wanna lose my home, it's, it's gonna give me a very big hardship, and, uh, I just don't have the money. So, I was coming to you guys to, to, a couple of options, one, you know, waive it, which I understand that, that's, that's not the best influence for the city, because, you know, they're out of money. The other one was to allow me to make payments back to the city, um, to pay those fees, or the other one was to, to go ahead and make the, uh, allow me to do a seepage pit. Like, again, you know, I, I, um, I understand that it's gonna create a trend, if you guys allow me, but I'm sure there's a lot more people out there with, with seepage pits that are going bad, that they live in the city of, of Victorville, that maybe the, the, uh, sewer line is already lateral to, to the property. But not everybody has $7,500 to just get out of their pocket when they're just barely making it right now. They'd rather walk away from the house, and that's one of the things I'm trying to avoid, is to, for my house to go, uh, under foreclosure, have to pick my tenants that are seniors to fix income, um, I'm just trying to avoid all that, you know, so what I'm really asking this for is, you know, if, if you can, allow me to do a new seepage pit, allow me to do make payments back to the city, so I go ahead and, and start the process and, and putting a new, uh, uh, well, connecting the sewer, I guess, in this case, or if you can, you know, allow me to put a new seepage pit, which is, you know, $2,500 compared to $7,600. You guys add, ask for quotes, I give them to, um, to Jim, um, I think you guys have them, you can see the difference on, on what would create, and, um, again, you know, I, I just don't have the extra money to go ahead and, and do it right away, so I'm pleading for you guys to, uh-
I'm a little confused, I'm, I'm looking at the cost comparisons of 2556 versus 5715, I, I don't see any $7,600.
Yeah, they asked for other quotes, so like Omega, Alpha Omega, if I was to go with them, it would be 7,600, well, $7,650. If I was to go with Burns, it was $7,115.
Yeah, but RotoRooter will do it for 5,700.
Uh, yeah, RotoRooter, because I used them in the past, and, but not everybody has that luxury, you know, they're, um, not too long ago, I had another house that something happened like this, so I'm a big, I'm a customer there, and they gave me a break, that's the only reason, but typically, it's, it's, uh, to connect to a sewer, it's about 30, 3,000 to 3,500 plus the city fees, which is 4,200.
Do we have arrangements or policies about making payments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, when the city of Victorville was actively involved in encouraging people to connect to the sewer, we have assessment districts, 1911 Act, excuse me, and in order to allow the, most people to connect to the sewer and to encourage them, we established a payment plan, I think Green Tree East is a perfect example, and depending upon the cost, we allowed up to five years, assuming that the property owners would come up with a down payment, and then have a lien on their property that they paid annually with their property tax payment, and, uh, I'm sure that if it was legal when we did that, it's still legal today, and the city attorney could draw those, uh, documents that would become a lien on the property to do that.
You okay with that?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's one of the options that I put in my letter, with the harsh of us to possibly, uh, making payments.
Well, let's, let's assume that the, the $2,500 that would be the minimum price to do it, that would be paid, and the payment plan would be on the remaining 2,200.
That would be reasonable, if there's, if the minimum amount to the repit is going to be paid, then that would be the amount that would, uh, equal to that would be paid, and the remaining amount become a lien on the property, and I, if that is the request of the council, um, I'll sit on with it, an attorney as soon as possible, we'll actually pull out documents, we may have a form already that will fulfill that requirement and work with the property owner so that he can get connected and, and maybe ease the financial burden a little bit.
Does that need a motion? I'll make it if it needs a motion.
Gonna modify what we've done, what we've done right now is basically, uh, he has to hook up, no, no questions asked. Now, if we wanna modify that a bit and move ahead, uh, he still has to hook up, but payment plan is in play.
I'll make a motion that he has to hook up, and that you make a down payment equal to the 2556 for the seepage pit, and a payment plan for the remainder, not to exceed a year, with a lien on the property.
Not to exceed one year?
One.
Yeah. Handle a year?
I, I was hoping for, I asked for three years, but, I mean, right now-
I think our city manager had indicated that we had, had, on occasion, had a five-year plan, or not?
Well, the, what, at the time, the city council allowed up to five years, some of the connections were 16, 17, 18,000, that's why they went up to five years. I can't remember the, I can't remember the cutoff that was required to be paid in one year, but they did, they started with one year, and as it went up, it went up to a-
I, I wasn't suggesting five, I just said that, you said one, like, but I, I mean, I'm, I, any kind of a payment plan that, uh, we still require the, the hookup, and-
Could, I mean, couldn't we just direct staff to work on that, and then they come back?
Yeah.
They have to come back to us anyway, don't they? Yeah, so-
He's gotta act pretty quickly.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta get it done.
Right, no, 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 I, I agree, I'm just saying as far as the payment plan, maybe it's one, maybe it's two, maybe it's three years, and we'll, I'll just defer to staff on that.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate three years, I mean, that's a little easier than, that year comes quick.
Well, we'll direct staff to work with you, and maybe it'll be somewhere in between, at two. But we'll get, we'll get it done. All right, so that's still the nature of your motion, that we move forward on that. Um, Kelly, could you make the motion for him, since the screen's not working?
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify something, just as the Administrative Services Director, CFO? Um, under this scenario, the city would then pay RotoRooter on his behalf and then collect payment from him? Is that what you're envisioning? If so, that might involve a very small additional appropriation, it's not a huge amount, but we need to have that direction as we move forward, because the bill is from RotoRooter. Typically, the assessment districts are a little bit larger, and it's actually a city project, city puts in those, uh, those lines.
I think that's how it would have to be.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number nine. Uh, this is a presentation of information from the Audit Subcommittee, and I'll actually have Councilmember Kennedy handle this as chair of our subcommittee.
Uh, we, we made a statement back, um, December, January, that the Audit Committee would bring a recommendation to the council, uh, about audit or retention, and our recommendation is that we send out an RFP. Uh, staff has a list of several firms they've determined are qualified, uh, how many on that list, Doug?
Uh, it's extensive, I don't know the number off the top of my head, though, Councilman Kennedy.
But that RFP will go out tomorrow?
It will be out, uh, on the street tomorrow morning, and, of course, any qualified firm would be welcome to, uh, to submit into the RFP, and we will do our best to identify as many firms as possible to make sure that they get notice of that.
And because the auditor, like the city attorney, works for the council, not for management, uh, this is a decision the council, I think, should make, it's our recommendation, so I'll make the motion that we send out RFPs for audit services for the next fiscal year, June 31.
Will you, okay.
Second.
For whatever reason, it's not bringing our buttons up, so, Councilman Rothschild, seconded.
By Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Councilmember Rothschild.
Vote yes.
I, I find it, um, interesting that now that the auditors actually told the truth about Victorville, you're willing to replace them, but thank you-
I did not say we were replacing them, I said we're going to RFPs, they're on the list. I expect they will respond.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and with no other items on the agenda, we are adjourned.